Switch items two and three. So we will move on to the Jefferson County annexation proposal, file number AX-22-1. This is continued from March 15th, 2023. We will open the public hearing. This is the time and place set for hearing on planning file number AX-22-1. The hearing is now called to order. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will present the staff report. Applicant will present its application and supporting evidence. Any interested persons will be given, be provided the opportunity to present testimony or evidence in support that is neutral or that is in opposition. Applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. Staff will provide closing comments. Any party may request that the written record remain open to respond to testimony presented at the hearing. At the conclusion of the hearing, the Planning Commission may close the public hearing and deliberate towards a decision, close the public hearing and defer deliberations towards a decision at a date and time certain, or continue the public hearing at a date and time certain. All testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed to the applicable criteria or any other approval criteria you believe to be applicable. Matters unrelated to the application are not pertinent to the Planning Commission's decision in these proceedings. Failure on the part of any person to raise an issue that is not specific enough to afford the Planning Commission and parties to this proceeding an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the City Council and the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to conditions of approval with sufficient relevance to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Commissioners must disclose any ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts of interest. Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature and whether you intend to participate in these proceedings. I do not.
This is Ashlyn, and I do not.
This is Commissioner Kendall, I do not.
Commissioner Irvin, I do not.
Does any party wish to challenge any member of the hearing's body based on ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts? Hearing none. We'll move on to the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Hassel. So you've seen this annexation proposal a few times. A few weeks ago, one of the property owners involved in the annexation proposal reported to me that he was satisfied with the proposal and ready to move forward. And so, this evening, we have the same annexation proposal to annex roughly fifteen and a half acres and additional right-of-way. Try to get to the staff report that shows roughly a map of the territory that's proposed to be annexed while I'm talking here. And so, the conditions of approval associated with this decision are related to the dedication of right-of-way. Okay? And so, the red area on the screen is the territory that's proposed to be annexed. That includes real property, but also the adjoining right-of-way on the various streets. Okay? Want that to be important in the record as well. So what we're, in effect, conditioning, as it's noted in the decision, I can show you the conditions of approval, but the biggest issue that we have or that needs to be resolved through the conditions of approval is that Third Street, that runs north and south, we're asking for the right-of-way to be dedicated to the minor collector street standard, which is the narrower. You recall the initial draft decision identified dedicating to a major collector standard. We've reduced that to a minor collector standard. Additionally, the dedication, as noted in the condition of approval, identifies that it's to maintain the same centerline of Third Street that exists to the south, maintain that same direction. And so, each property would dedicate the amount of land for the right-of-way to maintain that. So presumably, the properties on the east side of the right-of-way would dedicate more because they have more land in that area where we need the street, so on and so forth. So there's also minor dedication for the street that runs east and west. And I'm going to go to that condition of approval. So we have it right in front of us. Sorry, my mouse, my computer goes a little quicker than this. Yeah, so Poplar Street. So the east-west right-of-way is Poplar Street, and they need to dedicate additional sixteen feet of that. So that, the other condition of approval is, like I said, the dedication of Third Street as well. So this proposal has pretty well been drafted. Staff reviewed it quite a bit. I think, I don't know if there's too much more to say. What I would recommend is, if you guys have any initial questions now before you proceed through the hearing and take public comments, I can maybe take some initial questions to help you get through the public testimony portion of the hearing this evening. But of course, during your deliberation, would certainly be available for questions as well.
So the redrawn lines do not need to be part of the conditions of approval as far as making sure that everyone agrees with the new engineer reports related to the property line adjustment? That doesn't need to be a condition?
Well, it's my understanding that that already should be taking place. But if we need, if you recommend or would like that to be a condition of approval, we can certainly do that.
I just, I'm still seeing in the report that a revised legal description and map have not been submitted into the record.
Yeah, so the applicant needs to provide that. And so, the thought is, is that we were going to hold this hearing this evening. The applicant understands that they need to provide us an updated legal description. That is underway. I did not want to uphold the public hearing again for that purpose because I knew it was underway. Quite frankly, we've held a number of hearings on this for a while. And it's my understanding that legal description would be provided to the city before the City Council public hearing, and I believe maybe May 9th. And so, we would update the record accordingly with that. Nonetheless, if we don't, staff would update the recommended decision to the City Council to include that requirement before the adopting ordinance is considered by the City Council. So we've got really, call it three decisions or three checkpoints to make sure that that gets completed. One is the Planning Commission decision this evening, and the second is the City Council public hearing, and the third would be the consideration of the adopting ordinance by the City Council. So it's my opinion that we can get this completed in a timely manner. That said, and as I previously mentioned, if you would like to include that as a condition of approval, I don't think that bothers me at all. So I have no problem with that.
Any other questions before moving on? All right, with that, we'll move on to the applicant, if they have any testimony.
Jeff Rasmussen, County Administrative Officer for Jefferson County. One of the, I guess I'm the lead applicant, or the county is. You don't have anything that's not in the staff report, other than Mr. Gisler, who was not amenable to the conditions at first, has come to a solution with the city. So I guess all the applicants are now in favor, as far as I know. You know, a long process is the, we call it the homes annexation. If you remember, there was a little blue house. For whatever reason, the homes moved down to Arizona someplace, down in about 2012, stopped paying their taxes, they both passed, no heirs. And so, it finally came to tax foreclosure. The county's then taken it upon itself to take the three lots and make them into one, thinking that would be a better development in the future. At some point, we do have to do a tax foreclosure under state law, no matter what. So we didn't want to put that out and potentially just have three smaller lots that may not be developed to the best. So we've gone through that process, and then asked, they knew the neighbors wanted to join us on the annexation petition to join, three of them did. And so, that's where we are. Excited to be done with this as well. With that, I dedicate the rest of my time to Dr. Baker.
All right. Do we have any other testimony on Zoom? Hearing none. Are we prepared to move forward with the decision? All right?
Chair Hassel, just for best practices, let's just double check. We don't have any proponent-neutral or proponent testimony?
Sorry. Is there any neutral testimony on this issue? Any opposition? Okay. With that, I would look for a motion.
Do we need to close the public hearing first?
Yes, it would be preferred, but yes.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing first? Or you can just do that, Joel?
You don't need to take formal action to close the hearing. Just, your decision on the proposal needs to be, include a motion and a second.
With that, we'll close the public hearing and move on to a motion.
Commissioner Irvin, I move that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the City Council to approve the proposed annexation based on the findings provided.
This is Commissioner Kendall, I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So now, I would invite Dr. Baker to rejoin, and we can step back to item two. Thanks, Jeff.
Chair Hassel, so what we'll do, since Commissioner Baker arrived shortly after we opened the public hearing, we'll just reflect him as, the minutes will reflect him as recusing himself as he indicated to staff earlier in the day that he would do that.
Okay.
Okay, so, but the minutes will be drafted in such manner, and you could amend them if you'd like when we present them to you for approval.
So basically, the minutes would be that he was here but recused on that issue?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay. As per Planning Commission bylaws, we need to elect chair and vice chair for the upcoming year. And I don't want to be nominated.
Are you going to read all those bylaws?
Do we? We don't have to read them.
No, no, we include them in there just in case there's any questions about that.
If there's any challenge, perfect.
Usually, there's questions about, you know, what is term of officers? What are the duties of chair or vice chair? So we include them just so it's there, and we can answer any questions. So bylaws state that each, at the beginning of each year, the Planning Commission is to appoint a chair and vice chair. And as you may know, we haven't had a full attendance at a commission meeting for some time. So we did put on the last meeting's agenda, and there was a desire to consider this, these appointments when we had full attendance. So that's why we've scheduled it for this evening. Again, so the appointment would be on a calendar year basis. So one way to think about it would be if you're appointed chair or vice chair, you, you know, only have eight more months to go. You wouldn't have to serve the full twelve months. And then in January 2024, the first meeting in 2024, we would provide the commission the opportunity to reappoint or make changes in the appointment of the chair and vice chair.
I make a motion to nominate Ashlyn as chair.
Ms. Mike, I'll second that.
Let's make sure our microphones are on.
I will make a motion to nominate Commissioner Irvine as chair.
So you already have one motion that's been moved and seconded. So that needs to be voted on before another can take place.
Seeing that Ashlyn does not want to take that role, I will remove my motion from the floor.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Kendall, I second the motion to make Commissioner Irvine chair.
I will accept if Ashlyn will do vice.
So maybe the easiest way to do it would be to withdraw the motion. Someone would identify, create a new motion identifying the two chair and vice chairs.
Okay, I can do that. So we will withdraw the motion to make Commissioner Etter the chair, and we will motion to make Commissioner Irvine the chair. And I, Commissioner Etter, will be vice chair if motioned.
Mary, are you interested at all?
I will second the motion. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. Congratulations. And thank you. Okay, so does that wrap up that? No?
Oh, that agenda item, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. So... We will call the work session to order. Or wait, we have to adjourn the regular meeting.
Oh.
Wait.
No, we need to, we need to discuss the quarterly schedule of the Planning Commission meeting.
Missed that, okay. Never mind. Additional discussion. Sorry.
Yeah, so in our last meeting, during the agenda item related to the annual election of chair and vice chair, there was also discussion of what time the Planning Commission should meet. And one suggestion was maybe moving the Planning Commission meetings back to 6:30 instead of 6:00 PM. So staff has no problem with that. I think really what the Planning Commission should consider is what time is most appropriate that allow you to attend your meetings. So, you know, for example, if you've got to travel a long way, maybe let's push it back a little bit so that, you know, you can reasonably attend on time and that sort of thing. So, and that's a reasonable change. The bylaws do allow us to, or you to, set your Planning Commission meetings date and time, so. I'm sorry? Yes, you do.
This is Commissioner Kendall, I make a motion to change our start time of our meetings to 6:30 in the evenings.
This is Commissioner Etter, and I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Great. All right. Former Chair Hassel, now it might be an appropriate time to hand the gavel over and open the work session to Commissioner Irvine.
Do we have any further discussion, Nick?
No, we need to make clear that we have adjourned the regular meeting, though.
All right. And at 6:38, we will adjourn the regular session. And turn it over to you for the work session.
Wonderful. All right, we'll change over the presentation, staff will. The primary objective of the work session this evening is to present the housing capacity analysis that we've been working on for, well, maybe about a year or so. Okay? So before we get too far into this, I wanted to provide some background on why we're actually doing this. As you recall, the city has a comprehensive plan, as required by state law. As part of that law, the state requires the city to have an urban growth boundary, which represents a twenty-year land supply for the different types of land needs in the city. And those, generally, those land needs are residential land needs, employment land needs, and so on and so forth. The city's current housing needs analysis was approved in 2007. Things have changed a little bit, just a little, over time, both economically, but also from a plan, policy, and regulatory perspective. And updating the comprehensive plan, the housing needs analysis, which identifies how much residential land need is the rational basis for determining how much residential land need the city needs for the next twenty years, we, that was part of the housing needs or the housing action plan that we prepared, the city prepared in 2018. And so, big picture here, you recall that in 2018, we approved the housing action plan, and we used the kind of bright and shiny objects approach to prioritizing those action items in there. And so, one of the things we did to most effectively address our housing challenges were reduce our STCs, we established our urban renewal district, we adopted our middle housing code changes, expedited permitting for new development. And then one of the last things to do was update our comprehensive plan. So I don't want to minimize the importance of it. It just doesn't have some of the glamour or the maybe visible impact as, you know, changing your development code or reducing the STCs. But it is very important. So the city did get a grant from DLCD. We're very thankful for that, to do that. We have hired Echo Northwest to do that. Echo Northwest completed the 2007 housing needs analysis, and quite honestly, does a lot of comprehensive planning work for the city of Madras. Just about all of that work, they do for us. Great firm, do very good work. And so, they also have a lot of experience. So typically, what we would do is we would develop the housing needs analysis and then with advisor committee and conduct public outreach, things like that, schedule a public hearing before the Planning Commission, have you guys consider taking formal action on it. And the same with the City Council. There's a lot to this. I don't know that there's a whole lot of controversial or components of the analysis that will draw strong opinions, and maybe opposition or otherwise. But we thought it would be best to have a work session on this, right? Let you have plenty of time to ask questions, get answers from staff and our consultant, Echo Northwest, so that when we do schedule a public hearing in the near future, you have some, you have some background on this, and what it means, why we're asking you to approve it, and things like that. So Beth Goodman is here with us from Echo Northwest. She'll be walking us through the presentations evening. And so, Beth, how was that for setting the table?
It's a very kind introduction, good information for everybody to have. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. So, Nick, shall I go ahead and start talking about things?
Yes. And maybe you could also let our commissioners know if they have questions, you want them to hold in the end, or just interject during the presentation?
I want people to interject, but just realize that the whole room is about an inch and a half high. So somebody will have to tell me to stop. So, so please, as we go along, I would appreciate your questions. Can we go to the next slide? So, building on what Nick was just saying, why are we doing a housing capacity analysis? Well, it's the basis of the housing element in your comprehensive plan. So to make future changes, say, to your comprehensive plan or redesignate land, rezone land, having an updated housing needs analysis, housing capacity analysis, is really helpful for that. It's the basis by which you make findings. So the housing capacity analysis, which used to be called a housing needs analysis, answers the questions of how much growth is there going to be in twenty years? Where is Madras's buildable lands? We'll talk a lot more about that in a few minutes. Does Madras have enough buildable residential land to accommodate expected growth? That's the essential answer to the housing capacity analysis. And then beginning discussions about what policies are needed to better meet Madras's housing needs. And so, this sets us up for looking at a revision to the 2018 housing action plan. As Nick said, you've accomplished a lot. And so, the question is, what unmet housing needs does Madras continue to have where the city can make different changes? So we'll discuss those as we're talking about this. Next slide, please. The housing capacity analysis and the revised comprehensive plan information in blue, those are both part of this project. The housing capacity analysis is a technical report, has information about land, about your housing market, about your demographics, affordability, there's a lot of information in there about that, the forecast of new housing, and your estimate of new, of land sufficiency. So whether you've got enough land. We'll also be presenting at your hearings, an updated comprehensive plan. We've updated a few of the policies, and then removed the old housing needs analysis information. So these two both feed in to updating the action plan. Any further changes to zoning code that the city may want to discuss, and any further changes to housing policies or programs? Those are all in gray, they're set up in this, but they're really beyond this project to start implementing any of that. Before I go on, are there any questions? Okay. Then next slide, please. So as Nick mentioned, we've been working on this since mid-two thousand and twenty-two. We are here, um, in April, talking with you. We've got a newly complete housing capacity analysis. I would say, aside from any minor changes in it, it's essentially complete. Nick, um, were they sent the housing capacity analysis in their packet?
No, no, they weren't. Just a presentation. Yeah.
Okay, well, um, what we'll be presenting to you today is a fraction of the information in the housing capacity analysis. It has a lot more data than we'll be discussing today. Next slide, please. So through this, we've been, um, engaging with the project advisory committee. And Nick, could you talk about who's on our project advisory committee? I remember a few people's names.
Yeah, so, uh, we've got, um, Joe Krenowitz, Representative Chamber. We've got Rick Allen, uh, as a realtor on there. We've got, uh, George Nielsen from the Bean Foundation on there. We, we also have, uh, uh, representation from the Central Oregon Realtors Association on there. We, we do have representation from city council on there as well. A few others. Participation's been rather light and I think that's probably something that, um, is, is, uh, important to note to the planning commission. For whatever reason, this hasn't been, uh, the advisory committee meetings haven't been well attended. And, and, um, I think we, I'm not exactly why that is, uh, sure why that is. We, um, have struggled with, um, some of our outreach strategies to get our, our underrepresented, uh, community members. That being Latinx, also Native American, uh, representation in this project. And so that admittedly has been a struggle. In planning process and, and, and participation are two very, very important pa- aspects of planning. I had talked with Beth, with, talked with Beth about this at length. Where, where I sit today, um, and, and the staffs of the project, I think that we've done a decent job of trying to engage, uh, the community. Could we have done better? Oh, yes. Uh, I also believe that part of my ethical obligations are to advocate for those who can't advocate on their own behalf. And this is a very technical aspect of, of planning. And, um, we, we have set up an online open house with, with some survey questions there. The, the point of that was, of course, to get participation, but as I explained to Beth and a few others, I think the, the real objective to that was the, the pure data already identifies, as you'll see this evening, a real need in our community. And from a policy perspective, right? Let me just explain what a policy is again, because I think it's really important. You're amending, you're, you're gonna, in a few weeks, consider an amendment to your comprehensive plan related to housing with policies in there. And this is a policy aspect of that plan, which is, remember, if we're in Madras, Oregon, the policy is, if we want to go to Portland, we go generally north and west, right? General direction. If we need to know how fast to drive and which lefts and rights to take, those are, those are more specific actions. So, the policy direction that, that the data is indicating we need to go, I don't know would materially change. In other words, there's some pretty alarming statistics in my mind about the need of housing in our community. And I would, uh, just as a question for you this evening, tell me if that, if, if you knew how many, you know, maybe Native American or Hispanic Latino families were affected, would it materially change how we're approaching with the land supply and how we're going to make sure we get the needed housing in our community? I don't think it would materially change. So, that's a long way of saying we, we, we legitimately tried. These, um, Latino and Native American community members historically have not participated in these proceedings. And September will be fifteen years here with the city of Madras. For fifteen years, it's been a challenge for me, okay? So it's not for lack of effort or at least awareness, but I will tell you professionally, I have an eye for their needs. And so I do believe the proposal this evening, um, includes, uh, their needs. So, um, that was a longer answer, answer that I think Beth wanted, but I think it was probably an appropriate time to explain that.
No, and, and Nick, following up on that, um, in all honesty, this is the boring stuff. This is the, the technical analysis that, um, you and I and your planning commission will probably find quite interesting. But the next part of it, looking at your policies, um, that's the part that, that more people understand and, and they resonate with a little bit better. And so I've, I've seen, and I've done a lot of these across the state. A certain kind of person gets involved in the housing capacity analysis. And then normal people, um, are more interested in the, uh, the policy analysis, the policy discussion, which would be in the, um, action plan update. So, um, and I think the information that we have in the housing capacity analysis, you're completely right, is very compelling about different housing needs, um, for different groups of people. So. Are there any questions before we go on? Okay. Going to the next slide. And the next one after that. So there's a lot of information in the housing capacity analysis about the state of the city's, um, housing market currently. We've decided to summarize it by looking at building permit, um, uh, activity. When I came on, uh, working on the action plan in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen, as you see on, on this graph, there was very little permit activity, even though the rest of the state, um, was, was definitely very lively at that point. I was, uh, probably working with, uh, City of Redmond at that point, and I'm working with City of Bend right now as well. So I, I've seen a lot of what's been going on in Central Oregon, um, over the years. And Madras made some, some dramatic changes to its housing system. So both to your housing policies, um, but also in implementing things like your urban renewal district, your H E R D, your Housing Urban Renewal District, um, and what you've done with system development charges, um, what you've done to engage, um, with, uh, developers, um, who were at, back in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, disengaged with the city at that point. Um, and so what you see is two thousand and nineteen and twenty, you had a little jump in, in building permits and then a massive jump in two thousand and twenty-one. And you can't expect to, to maintain that high number of permits year over year, um, all the time. So two thousand and twenty-two was a little bit quieter, um, and then, uh, we've got a fair bit in the pipeline right now. So between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and twenty-two, um, the city issued, um, three hundred and fifty-eight building permits, seventy-four percent of which were single-family types of housing. But last year, you changed your development code to allow middle housing types. So what we're seeing in the development pipeline right now is just different. So for, I don't know, fifteen years, I've been talking about, oh, Oregon hasn't seen a new manufactured home park, uh, since about two thousand. You've got a new ma- manufactured home park coming in with fifty-nine units. Manufactured homes tend to be much more affordable and they tend to be affordable ownership, um, type of housing, which you don't get, um, very easily at all. You've got twenty-four units of income-restricted affordable senior housing, a hundred and seven units of multi-family housing, um, a lot of it up in Euro, that's market rate multifamily. Twenty-nine townhouses. Um, I love this last one. An income-restricted subdivision of about forty lots, most of which will be quadplexes. That's, uh, that's, I, I, it's not completely unique within the state, but that's neat, um, to see that happening. So you're, you're seeing different housing types even in a short period of time since, uh, your new development code changes went into effect. I expect over the next five years, you'll see more, um, new development types and more of a mixture of housing types because of the way your development system is set up. So you're seeing some changes in, um, uh, more development and more, uh, types of development, more diversity of housing. To the next slide, please. So this goes on to a very short version of, uh, what is the affordability problem in Madras? And Madras is not unlike other cities in Central Oregon and across Oregon in having, um, relatively high rates of cost burden. So when we look at this, forty percent of all your households pay at least thirty percent of their income on housing costs. So they're said to be cost-burdened. Twenty-five percent of all of your households spend half of their income on housing costs. And so that's, that's, that's a lot. When we look at renters, fifty-three percent of Madras's renters were cost-burdened. And a third of them, thirty-six percent, were severely cost-burdened. So the renters are, are in trouble, especially the ones who are severely cost-burdened and spending, um, uh, fifty percent of their income on housing costs. So in the next set of slides, we'll, we'll see that play out a little bit more. As we think about housing affordability as a concept, one way to look at it is, um, by income. Um, and we're looking here at, um, housing, uh, cost by income, um, based on median family income. And so that's for a household of four. So a household of four that earns a hundred percent of median family income in Jefferson County has income of about seventy-one thousand, six hundred dollars. They can afford about eighteen hundred dollars a month in rent, um, without being cost-burdened. And then the, the price of the house that they can afford varies a little bit based on interest rates. But let's say that it's, it's well below the median sales price we were seeing, um, at the end of two thousand and twenty-two, um, for about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. That household can certainly not afford that median sales price. When you look at, uh, multifamily rents, not including utilities, you're talking about twelve hundred and fifty dollars a month on average. When you add in utilities, that's usually another two hundred and fifty. So you're talking about fifteen hundred dollars a month in rent. Well, your household earning a hundred percent of median family income, they can afford fifteen hundred dollars a month in rent. If it's newly built housing, then that newly built housing is probably more expensive than that. So when you think about need for affordable housing, looking at the, the low end of the income spectrum at below fifty percent of median family income, those households are earning a little less than si- thirty-six thousand dollars and they can afford nine hundred dollars a month in rent without being cost-burdened. Well, at fifteen hundred dollars a month, um, they're certainly not able to afford rents in Madras. Not able to afford rents in, in Central Oregon, um, in all honesty. Newly built housing that's affordable for households with income below fifty or below sixty percent of median family income, that newly built housing, um, is usually built by, uh, nonprofit developers, your housing authority. It's income-restricted housing. So it's got state and federal funding in it. It's rarely built other than with, with, uh, state and federal funding. So housing that's affordable between that amount and eighty percent of median family income, well, they can get near, um, at the top of that eighty percent of median family income gets near the, uh, monthly rent, including utilities of fifteen hundred dollars. So at the top of that income spectrum. That kind of housing, um, is, is rarely built without some form of public subsidy. So you don't find market-rate affordable housing, um, uh, that, that's affordable at less than eighty percent of median family income that's newly built, very often without some form of subsidy. And then going up to the, the top part of what, um, many places call workforce housing. You have, uh, housing that's affordable at a hundred and twenty percent of median family income. So this household would earn eighty-five thousand dollars and still not be able to afford the median sales price of a home in, uh, in Madras. So your, your housing becomes affordable for, for sales at about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of income. So, and a lot of people in Madras don't have that. I'll go to the next slide and then I'll be happy to return to this slide, to, uh, to answer some questions. But when we look at your existing households, what we see is that almost fifty percent, so forty-nine percent of your households have incomes below fifty percent of median family income. What they can afford is income-restricted housing. When you look at, uh, that middle point, your low and your middle income households, that accounts for a little less than thirty percent of your households. Some of that housing will be newly built, um, without subsidy, um, by, uh, developers, but a lot of it still wouldn't. And then your higher income households, many of them can't afford, uh, um, median sales prices. So when Nick was talking about, um, alarming information, this information right here, it is frankly alarming. And I think this is, is part of the role that Madras is playing in Central Oregon. So when I first, uh, came out of grad school, um, and one of the first projects I was doing was for Jefferson County, looking at growth, we were making the case that Jefferson County, County was growing because the Bend region was growing. And here we are eighteen years later, um, and we can really see that, I think, reflected in this. So a lot of people in the region, they can't afford to live in Bend, they can't afford to live in, in Redmond. So they're living in Madras, they can't quite afford that either. But it's, it's closer to possible for them. And that's why you see such a large share of your, uh, community with income below thirty percent of median family income. Does anybody have any questions about this? What this chart says to me and what, uh, I say to anybody at the state who will listen to me is that there's great unmet need in Madras and Madras, the, uh, the city is doing a lot to support development of housing, um, for that unmet need. And in fact, I hear Madras talked about quite a bit in that context of, of Madras is really looking at, its community members' unmet housing need and taking policy actions to support that, um, where the city can support it. Because of course, the city doesn't build new housing. Nick, is everybody still awake there?
Oh, yeah, no, they're doing just fine. I think, uh,
Okay.
Quite honestly, my sense is, is this is a lot to take in already, and I think they're, they're seeing the statistics are, probably putting numbers to their intuition. Maybe their intuition was a little low and they're probably just seeing those numbers and reacting to it.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna maybe, uh, nudge Dr. Baker, um, our public health director, and we get to have him as a planning commissioner. Is this kind of aligned with what you see in our, in our community in ter- in terms of your monitoring of our, public health determinants through socioeconomic indicators?
Absolutely. This, this just solidifies what we're hearing, both just in the community discussion, but also in some of the literature, uh, when it comes time for, for housing, uh, stable housing, uh, multi-generational families in a single house, all, you know, all these, this really just kind of, and, and selfishly, even my own personal desire to eventually purchase a house in Madras that I can actually afford, and kind of settle, settle in and not being able to, you know? Governmental public health officials are, are well-paid, but we're not that well-paid. So it, it does highlight the need for, um, this, this middle market to capture. And I, I don't, you know, as one person, I don't need a multi-bedroom, four hundred thousand dollar home, but the other options for, for new housing is just not there. So this, this is, uh, like you said, it's a lot to, it's a lot to see and it's a lot to see specifically at the local level when you usually just read about it in, in other literature.
And so to add on to what Nick was saying earlier, um, just so you know, about a third of your community is Latino of any race. And eleven percent is, um, uh, American Indian or Alaskan native, mostly American Indian, I assume. And about ten percent is two or more races. So you have, uh, for Oregon, a comparatively diverse community. But when we look at any of those communities of color, um, when we look at rates of cost burden and income, what we see is those communities are the ones that, that typically on average have lower income and higher rates of cost burden. So it's important to re- recognize that and keep that in mind as we're thinking about the community. Any other questions or comments?
No, good discussion. I think we can move on.
Okay. So let's go talk on the next slide about buildable lands inventory. Okay. So let's go talk on the next slide about buildable lands inventory. So we're gonna turn to something that's uh, a little different. So what we do um, is we start with all land within Madras's urban growth boundary. Um, we look at land that is um, zoned to allow residential development outright. So that's things like your R one, your R two, your R three. We also consider your commercial, your C two and C three, because they allow housing outright. And then we consider land that is in county zoning. Um, so we're looking at all of that land. Um, and we're trying to determine what land is developed and what land is vacant. Um, so we define vacant land as land that has. Uh, 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 no permanent structures on it or structures that are worth less than ten thousand dollars. Developed land is the, the opposite of that essentially. You've also got land that is um, zoned for public uses um, or owned by public um, entities. Um, and that land is, is considered public um, and may not be available for development. If we go to the next slide. We also consider development constraints. So your um, your floodway, your floodplain, um, floodplain going right through the middle of town. Um, areas with slopes, slopes greater than twenty-five percent. Areas that are high or very high land susceptibility, susceptibility to landslides. Um, your Willow Creek, Riparian corridor, and then you've got a hunk of land that's in the uh, BPA's right of way. So any land, regardless if it's developed or vacant, that is within one of those um, uh, constrained areas. We don't count it as, as uh, well, we don't, we don't count it as vacant um, in the inventory. So on the next slide, what you see here is the inventory of vacant land. And we focused mostly here on the city limits. So you've got about four hundred and fifty acres of land in R one that is vacant. About forty-nine acres in R two. And then in R three, you've got about a hundred and ninety-one acres. Got a little bit of land that is in C two and C three um, vacant. We only consider part of that is likely to develop with housing. In part because you, you just don't have a lot of um, C two or C, C three land. Um, a little bit later, when we estimate the amount of capacity of that land. Um, we focus on land in the city limits. And then we look at um, land in the urban growth boundary and county zoning. A little bit differently because when that land annexes, it's not entirely clear um, at this point, or it's not clear at all. What zone that will annex into. Um, so we give a range of potential capacity for that land. Other questions about the buildable lands inventory?
Just a little interesting um, tidbit. So one of the middle housing code amendments that we made. Um, effective this last July was. Uh, if you've got a portion of your lot that has a slope of twenty percent or more. Um, you're not, you don't count that portion of the lot towards your lot area. So when we subdivide land, right, um, you've got steeper slopes. Um, you, you, that, that extra lot doesn't count towards your lot area. And so, and that plays out in a number of different ways, but. It's really a, a way to work with um, developers doing subdivisions. For different types of housing, making sure that developing steep land doesn't uh. Kind of hurt them in terms of meeting the clear and objective development standards. So it was interesting, FOTMA just brought the point, should we change that to twenty? Um, the standard to twenty-five percent. And so, you know, playing these, these things out, because it, it matters. You've, now you have data on where the slopes of twenty-five percent are. You wouldn't want to do that because less, the steeper slope means the, the, the smaller amount of land with that steep slope could be excluded from the lot area. But um, you play this out because uh, it, that matters because it's on the, mostly on the east side of Madras is where those steep slopes are at. Um, and uh, so I, there's a relationship between the building inventory and constrained land and how we, how we. Um, uh, divide land and what we uh, consider to be a lot moving forward for that.
Interesting point.
Uh, Beth, uh, would this be the time, maybe we. I think at the planning commission level, it's probably appropriate to discuss the county zoning and maybe assumptions.
Uh, could I do that in another couple of slides?
Sure.
Okay, because I, I, I'm pretty sure I've got that in here in another couple of slides. So then we turn away from, from land and its capacity for a few moments. Um, and then on the next slide, we look at the forecast of growth. So how much growth is Madras going to have? Well, we start with change in people. Um, two hundred, uh, sorry, two thousand nine hundred and forty-eight people. Is the city's official forecast from uh, the state um, through Portland State University's forecast program. And this is for twenty twenty-three to twenty forty-three. Um, we take out a little bit for people in group quarters and, and adjust for average household size. And then look at vacancy rates. And in the end, we come to uh, a forecast over the twenty-year period. Of growth of one thousand one hundred and sixteen dwelling units um, over the next uh, twenty years. Of course, that won't all happen at the same rate each year. So you won't see fifty-six new dwelling units most years. You'll see some number other than that. Um, and there'll be times where you've got more and times where you've got less um, housing development. Um, so what we're looking at in the housing capacity analysis is do you have capacity? For at least that number of dwelling units in your um, urban growth boundary. And really in your city limits is what we're asking right now. And the answer ends up being yes. Um, it's a yes and, um, and a little bit of a yes but, um, which we'll get to in a few minutes. So then on the next slide, looking at the types of new housing. Um, in our forecast, we're saying, hey, the majority of new housing, fifty-five percent, maybe a single family detached. Um, but you're also going to have a wider range of other housing types. So some townhouses, some duplexes through quads. Um, and then some multifamily unit, um, units. Where we figured that the city would have the largest growth of different housing types. Is in those middle housing types, the single family attached, and then the duplex through quads. Um, possibly um, also some growth in, in uh, the percent of housing in multifamily. So we're talking about a little bit different than the past, but we're seeing some of these uh. Uh, uh, some of this diversification of housing types play out already, um, pretty quickly. On the next slide.
Beth, before we go on.
Yes.
I, I would also point out to the commission that. Um. When we established the master plan uh, requirements.
That's a good point.
One of the things that we did. Was for um, um, certain sizes of residential development, based on the number of units. Um, in, in that proposed development, there to include, I think it's fifty or more. Units of uh, housing in a proposed development, they have to have two different housing types. Now, that's a little weak because we don't say, okay, if you have, you know, forty-nine single family detached and then like one. One uh, ADU, does that meet it? Well, I mean, that's not clearly what we're not trying to achieve. So we probably need to. Um, re- re- look at that. But the other is, if you over a hundred units of housing. Um, then you have to have three housing types. So when we talk about slightly shifting. Uh, uh, the number of forecasted single-family dwelling, and you're going to have more multifamily. And these are slight adjustments. Keep in mind, your code is requiring this as well. So it's not as if it's like a wish. Right?
No.
The other aspect of it is, our development code is set up and, and permitting process is a lot easier. So people to get through. So we're, we're already seeing some of the smaller, the duplex, two, three, four. Units of housing on, on a piece of land coming, coming forward, just because it's easier to do.
Right? And so Nick, that place out on the next slide, where we're looking at capacity of your land. Um, there was a, a lot of thinking that had to come, go into our sets of assumptions um, about. What kind of housing where and at what densities? And it's because your code is so flexible that um, it uh, it, it caused me to think more than I have to think. Um, because you can do many different types of housing in each of these zones. Um, so what we're looking at in moderate res- uh, density residential. Um, at about, about five point one dwelling units per gross acre. On four hundred and fifty acres of land, that's already um, twice the amount of uh, your forecast. So you've got more capacity um, within your existing uh, city limits. Um, than is forecast over the next twenty years. And so if the forecast is, is wrong, if it's too low, well, you've certainly got enough land, um, and you're not going to. Uh, have difficulties growing because you don't have enough land. I do want to call out that um, with the uh, R two. Um, that's where you only have forty-nine acres. Um, and so that, that's your, your but part. Um, you might want to look at um, are there appropriate places um, where you should look at rezoning R two. Um, land, um, to R two, to give a little bit um, uh, uh, more buffers between your R one. Um, in your higher density areas. Um, so. So yes, you've got about four thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dwelling units of capacity within your city limits. And then when we look at land in the county. What we did is we said, well, we don't know, um, it's not all going to come in at R one. Um, but if it all did, um, then that land has capacity for about nine to, nine hundred and sixty-eight dwelling units on it. At the densities of R one, um, the five point one dwelling units per acre. Um, if it all came in at R three, which it's not going to do, then you're talking about fifteen hundred units of capacity. So beyond your forty-two hundred units of capacity in your city limits. You've got another, I don't know, a thousand, twelve hundred dwelling units of capacity. Um, for land that can annex in. So the city has a lot of flexibility about uh. Uh, how it grows and where it grows. Um, this is a, a little bit unusual for uh, for, for some of our cities. Um, essentially, um, your, your past planning is paying off for you at this point. Are there any questions? All right.
I will, I will point out as staff, I'm delighted to see that the C two and C three zone. Is identified in this as having some capacity for housing in the future. Before we didn't have any of that. So, I mean, yeah, it's only sixty-seven units, but think about that. Sixty-seven units really in your downtown core. That would, that would be amazing for our downtown redevelopment. That's more people demanding services and so on and so forth. So. Your middle code changes did that. And so you're also getting credit for that in your, in your future uh, housing needs.
And quite frankly, because it's so difficult to predict redevelopment, we're, we're not attempting to predict redevelopment here. Um, but you could get more um, housing than that if you had a, a parcel of land. Um, that uh, you know, a building was demolished and, and a new uh, multifamily building was built. Um, so it's entirely possible that you could easily exceed that sixty-seven through a little bit of redevelopment. Um, over a twenty-year period. So the next slide, basically it says your capacity minus your demand and it shows. Um, it, it shows uh, how much uh, capacity you have, um, that's essentially surplus. Um, so how much room you have to grow beyond where your forecast to grow. Um, so about three thousand units beyond what your forecast to grow. And that's um, only within the city um, limits. Um, in addition to, um, as you're annexing land in. Uh, then you've also got that capacity.
Hey, hey Beth, you know, I'm not very good at math.
Uh huh.
But that would be, our land supply can accommodate three times the number of. Housing units that we're forecasting in the next twenty years. That's another way to look at this.
It's actually about four times. Um.
See, I'm not very good at math.
You, you're fine at math. Um, uh, and, and if you counted land, um, that's in uh, the county, but not in, inside the city yet. That's five times, um, the, the amount of growth that we're forecasting, a little less than five times, but right around there. So if we go onto the um, next slide. The conclusions from this are that your, your future housing need, it's for more housing that's affordable. Um, of all types. And that's affordable for people, I like to say, people who live and work in Madras. Um, it would also be affordable for people experiencing homelessness and coming out of homelessness. Um, the impact of the changes in Madras's um, development code um, in twenty twenty. It's going to take time for those uh, changes to be realized, but we see what's happening already. Um, and the, the house, uh, the city should look at supporting development of housing. Um, that's uh, affordable with both, hmm, to households with below average income. This is your workforce and your income restricted um, households. Um, and so all of those, quite frankly, are part of your workforce, um, because many people with that, that lower income. Um, are working, um, they're just working poor. On the next slide. These are a little bit about the changes um, that we're looking at to the comprehensive plan. The first one is essentially, it's a, it's a, not a policy change. It's just remove a bunch of information in the inventory section of your comp plan from the two thousand seven urbanization report. And replace it with a reference to the housing capacity analysis that you adopt by reference into the comprehensive plan. And so that the next time you do a new housing capacity analysis. Um, you basically can pop the old one out, pop the new one in, and it's very easy to do. There's a. Less apparent changes to your comprehensive plan at that point. It also keeps your comprehensive plan a little bit cleaner and shorter. Um, your comprehensive plan policies, they currently have a real focus on high-income housing. Um, so changing the uh, focus to housing affordable at all income levels. And then adding a policy about the city's um, existing density policies. And that uh, policy is being crafted by your city attorney. Um, and so that's what we'll be bringing forward in, in terms of changes to the comprehensive land. That is the housing capacity analysis. Nick, Nick asked us to talk some about potential policy changes. But I want to make sure before we go on to that, um, if there's any questions or, or concerns, um, we hear them.
I guess in general, my question would be, you know, looking at if you were to average out the number of new permits issued at fifty-six. That's still higher than the last four years. Um, so how does the city kind of also help its city offices? That are going to be dealing with an increase of administration of new building permits and things like that. And then secondly. You know, is this information shared with the school district? You know, how, how does this type of information flow through to the rest of the community?
Well, well, terrific question. In general, I would say that. We, in a, in a way, we don't need to share this with our large employers. Because they're already telling us they need housing. I mean, like screaming, yelling, we need housing. I mean, it, it just at every, I, it's not even just the large employers. I mean, if you listen. The small employers are, can be here saying the same thing. Okay, so. Um, it's, I don't know that we really need to share per se because it's new information. I think. Really the challenge moving forward is how do we respond to that? Because I was noting to FOTMA earlier, our current housing action plan contemplates thirty-six houses, housing units to be constructed. Each year. Well, this, this assessment identifies we need, now need fifty-six, right? And um, majority of the housing that's been constructed over the last, uh, at least twenty-four, dare I say thirty-six months. Has all been market rate housing. So, um, I think you're going to see here in, in a little bit, but the question is, how do we retool slightly to focus on that? Right? And so, um, the big buckets, um, I, I think Beth had the, the term right, housing system. How, how do you create a housing system with the different levers that create that? Well, we've, we've already reduced SDCs, we might want to modify that. We've already changed our development code and permitting process. And we've created a, a, a means or a, a district to help finance or buy down the cost of housing. So the question is, why aren't we getting that? And so I think you're going to hear more about that, not only tonight, but in the next um, coming year when we uh, update our housing action plan. Um, so again, as I was talking back earlier, this is more of a policy direction document that says. Hey, you probably need to be focusing on your workforce and lower income housing in your community. Maybe prioritize less than market rate housing. So of the resources the city has, which may be viewed as. So of the resources the city has, which may be viewed as um limited. Maybe you need to prioritize those, how the housing construction for those uh at at that income level. That's generally where we're going. Does that make sense?
Yes, I guess if just from a city perspective, you know, you work for the city. And how does this information about growth get to um the people who are going to be serving all these new people and new households? You know, how how does this information flow through to the police department about population growth and types of housing? How do we, I mean, I guess what I'm wondering is just more big picture is how do you share this information with other city offices that are going to be impacted by an increase in population? Whether it's the school district, the city police, you know, how how does this information get spread out to those other? You know, kind of governmental agencies that will be dealing with an increase of population that we haven't seen before.
Yeah, so um step even further back, maybe at a not thirty, but maybe forty five thousand foot level. Good question. And so I think when we, when we, when we talk about growth, oftentimes we're talking about impacts of growth, which tends to have more of a negative connotation in terms of, oh, my gosh, how are we gonna make sure that the needs of the community are met? Because oftentimes in the the discussion of growth, it's growth is occurring faster than maybe services or are being provided or needs of the community are being met. And so um what I'll tell you is the great thing about Madras is if we only get fifty six housing units a year, that would be fantastic. I don't think a hundred and twenty four units of housing a year is sustainable, okay? So part of that, I think, is more of a controlled growth. We're not a top shelf market for development where developers are just really actively looking to develop. So I think we're gonna see less pressure to build a lot of housing. In in some regards, that's good, so you don't, you you have more of a a a consistency between meeting the needs of the community existing and and as growth occurs um than otherwise. So uh in terms of police, you know, the really the 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 challenge that the city has is in two thousand and nineteen, we said, we need housing and we need it everywhere, and we're gonna create a seven hundred acre urban renewal district. And we're gonna take all that money from the urban renewal district and buy down the cost of housing at the expense, quite honestly, of other taxing districts, okay? Um so. But also part of growth, what we see, um there's, there's kind of the direct and indirect impacts, the way I think of it. So the direct impacts are where you have infrastructure that's not necessarily sized correctly to handle development. So um you know, I like to pick on Ben, I I have some great friends there that do amazing work despite all the criticism in the community. Damon being one of them, their their senior planner. But you know, Ben had a lot of criticism over the years about infrastructure, particularly transportation being built and all this increased volume on their transportation system, but then intersections weren't being improved, whether signalized or or uh roundabouts, in some cases, they needed overpasses at Mur- Murphy Road, you know, two hundred million dollar projects that weren't occurring in a timely manner and creating other effects, right? So what I'm suggesting is that because you have the herd, you're gonna be more able to respond to those needs in a more proactive manner. The indirect impacts of growth are to, um you know, I I know you're on the budget uh committee for the aquatic center. They're not getting any more money for the additional residents in our community. Neither is fire, but fire department's the only one that said, hey, we needed some money to be given to us as a result of the impacts of the housing or renewal district. So those are the challenges, and that's quite honestly why we we have some of the challenging conversations with some of our community partners that are uh taxing districts. I would also say, what is the problem we want? Because there is no silver bullet here. So back in two thousand seventeen, the city council said administrator and community development director, bring me a housing action plan that responds to the needs of our community in terms of housing. I think we've largely done that as a really solid first step. I think now what we're looking at is we're seeing the need for a lot more housing development at a lower income or a lower price point. So we need to retool slightly, adjust our our, how we're gonna accomplish that. But there is conversations that need to be had with other taxing districts and make sure they're doing everything they're, they can do in our community to make sure that they're funding themselves appropriately. My wife, she executive director of the pool. She went to a planning conference la- last week and she says, so we're adopting a new master plan for the the district. And she says, but we're gonna have all this new growth, but we don't get any new money. I said, yes, and that's why you need to adopt a system development charge for your district. So there's different ways that we can deal with the growth. But I would tell you. If we went through the pandemic and saw all that activity for housing, we probably would have captured maybe half of it. Because we didn't have the procedures and the regula- regulations to capture that growth. Meaning it would have been harder to permit if permitted at all. And some some regards, we couldn't have permitted some of this new development, so you wouldn't even have experienced it. Or it would have taken a lot longer to go get through the permitting process, and that's when people throw up the papers in the air and walk away. So in one regard, we're getting new housing. In the other regard, we still have how housing challenges and the districts are still feeling that impact. It's it's a vaccine problem. Welcome to the growth scenario or the 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 challenges of growth. And I don't know that every community has a perfect solution, but I think one of the 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 mechanisms that we've set up in place is our housing action plan. And if I had to forecast challenges or things that'll happen in in the future is you're gonna have a five year action plan, which I call a non regulatory plan, because it's not tied to the comprehensive plan. It is tied to your development code to make sure that it's working efficiently. But that needs to be updated every five years, and we need to be having this sort of conversation every five years, okay? Next, the one thing we haven't talked about is how are we dealing with our homeless community? So we're 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 gonna construct a shelter, we have community partners to provide services that are frankly doing everything they can and still struggling to meet the need. At the same time, there's other things we can do in our community, right? So I would tell you, probably the next twenty four to thirty six months, we're probably gonna have a homeless action plan. Okay, mi- very similar to the housing action plan. So I think you start putting these pieces in place and they need to work synchronously, work together comprehensively and and be consistent with each other. But what you're starting to see is the city's starting to address comprehensively by housing type or housing need or homeless need, different plans and different strategies are working together to create a more comprehensive approach. That still doesn't address the impact of the community. But I, what I would say is to our taxing districts, we're trying to build the housing that generally you need. And and I will tell you that more likely than not, in thirty years, uh sorry, uh uh twenty eight years, when we hand over the district, um um they are gonna be, you know, handed an amazing amount of uh uh tax revenue, should we ever wait that long. Um but it's it's a challenging question, it's a very, very good uh question, and I think it's the mindset that's needed, appreciate that. Uh should we go on, Beth? We got uh about nine more slides.
We do, not too many. So next slide, please, thinking about updating that action plan. So this is all the stuff that we've been talking about, that metro, that metro. I don't know where that came from. Madras, you are not metro, has done. Um on the next slide, um so what else might we be doing? So you made substantial substantial changes to your development standards for missing middle housing types. Um next might be, and it doesn't have to be, but next thing to look at is are there changes that the city wants to make to the single family detached housing development standards that it could allow for but not require smaller lot sizes? So just to preview that a little bit on the next slide. Here's your existing um regulations for your R one, your R two and your R three. Um so I'm gonna pick on R one, um just because it's easy. Um so you've got a a minimum lot size of seventy five hundred square feet and a maximum lot coverage of fifty percent and a minimum density of four dwelling units an acre. On the next slide. Um this imagines what if you decreased your minimum lot size, so you allowed a little bit lower minimum lot size. Um it doesn't affect in R one necessarily the maximum lot coverage. We think you could keep about the same lot coverage and the same minimum density. And and setbacks, we're not really seeing changes there. If you look at R two, if you're looking at, say, six thousand square foot lots, you'd need to allow a little bit more lot coverage and you might want to um require a little bit more minimum density. And um here's another set of changes for R three, looking at five thousand square foot um lots potentially. So the question really ends up being, and I think this will be a question we'll want to discuss um uh with this committee um as well as uh the uh stakeholders working with us um on the action plan update. Should Madras be allowing a little bit smaller lot sizes for single family detached housing? Um a lot of your older part of your city is built on um five thousand square foot lots, so you've got that already in the city. Um this isn't saying that you can't do larger lots. Nick, what questions or what uh issues did you wanna discuss with the planning commission around this?
Well, this is, this issue is something I've known for over fourteen years. Um when I first came to the city, I thought, my goodness, this is, these are very large lots. I think we're now starting to see the impact of that as housing becomes more crystallized and understood, more tangible to everyone in our community. When when best team brought this to my attention, I I was not surprised. I I'm, we, I pushed back on our consultants who did our middle housing code update and said, no, I'm not taking on this policy issue at this time. Because it it, I think there's, there's some history um and mindsets in the community uh that really would like to see larger lots. And they believe that larger lots uh are related to uh higher income individuals and uh higher quality of life, as you may define that individually. And I just don't know that that's the case, that case may be uh actually seen out in the ground. One of the things that uh our former planner Jeff Broderick did, that was immense immensely eye opening to me, um is when we considered the middle housing code amendments. One of the things we were looking at is how much infill development could we get on the west side of Madras? Because the perception was you had a lot of vacant lots. And so we did an inventory of that. I mean, literally drove through every, all the 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 entire neighborhood, it's not that big of a city. And we found that um that side of town predominantly has fifty feet wide by one hundred foot deep lots, which are five thousand square foot lots. And we also found that where there were code enforcement issues with trash, vehicles, all the like, things that people complain about at city hall because their neighbor, you know, their front yard or backyard looks or smells or, you know, creates some sort of problem with them were all associated with larger lots. And coincidentally, all of the multifamily, so two or more units on a, on a a lot on that side of town, we didn't have any problems with code enforcement on those. And we concluded that, number one, they were managed by property managers. And so, you know, you don't follow the rules, unfortunately, you know, you you get in trouble. So there was, there was that. And there seemed to be a, seem to be, we couldn't quite, you know, empirically determine this, but the larger the lot, the more personal belongings one has. And they tend to store them outside. And so tha- that was our conclusion. So that was why we started to say, well, we need, we we can get more housing units on, in our community. And so when we look at the minimum lot size, I I I do actually think that it is a value, it is something that's worthwhile. I also, when we started to discuss this, we started to see change in leadership at the city from a staff perspective. And I didn't know how that was gonna play out. I also didn't want to create more problems for myself and the planning commission and council than need be. And so this policy issue of reducing the minimum lot size. If the planning commission doesn't wanna take this on now or the city council, you could look at it in greater detail in our housing action plan update later this year, okay? So it's, it's not that the the issue goes away, we just don't put, you just don't throw all your dirty clothes in the closet and magically your room's clean, as my daughters do. So I I think there's another opportunity to revisit it. Uh what I would say here is keep in mind that it is a minimum. Doesn't require that, but it's a minimum. Uh I would also say that uh we, whether the housing action plan identifies it and we start taking this on next five years. But in five to ten years, we need to start looking at lot size and required density. Because you you, what you're starting to do is spend precious resources in terms of SDCs and housing urban renewal tax increment on new housing. And if you're not getting the number of dwelling units you need, you're spending precious resources for an outcome that isn't exactly what you need. And that fundamentally is a question that that the planning commission, council and community need to ask themselves. And so I see that being answered and could be quicker than five years or sooner. But maybe five to ten years, as we start to see some of these middle housing policies play out, we're gonna start to see how effective they are. And we may need to start saying, no, you need five, five or six dwelling units per acre in every zone. Okay? To help us get to these these price points and need um and needed needed uh needed housing in our community, pardon me. Thoughts on changing minimum lot size?
This is Commissioner Irvin. I think something for me that would be helpful is to do a walk around similar to what we did to some of the multifamily and multi unit so that we could have a clear idea of what that would look like in play. And then overlay that with some of the revised standards that we've come up with as far as what does a setback look like? What does tiering look for a two or three story building? Um I I think visually that would help me.
Great, great feedback.
Uh this is Commissioner Kendall. Um I agree with that, I think that's an excellent idea. Um also in comparison to, let's go to Bend and some of the lot sizes and how they've maneuvered the density by decreasing lot sizes and how close houses are to each other and and in angles that you can hardly drive out of your driveway without giving the right of way to your neighbor because you're gonna crash into each other the way they've positioned them. Those are the kind of things that I have seen that seem a little worrisome if we start trying to get too high a density into the areas and and make the lot sizes too small. I don't wanna, I don't wanna not look at it and see that it might be a need, but I also don't wanna go to the other extreme where it's like, uh for example, when I was in real estate and we, there was a development in um La Pine, which had lots of open land. Um and they did a subdivision and they made single family dwelling houses. And then in between those, they made these little shotgun kind of houses. And you could stand literally between the two houses and you didn't, I'm not that big of a person and I could touch both walls. Um you know, so they might as well have just put them together rather than have, uh you know, so. And I think it's, which there, there, you know, people threw their arms up because it's like, why are you doing that when you have so much land? Um first of all, and secondly, you know, th- those are the kind of extremes. So as long as we don't go to the extremes, um you know, we can certainly visit that, but. I'm, I'm with Commissioner Irvine. I would need to see it so that I can actually walk around and see what that size means. Because to me, right now, in my mind, 5,000 square feet seems pretty small. But, you know, given the issues that the city has dealt with, you know, the larger lots, that may not just be because they have a larger lot. It may be culturally how somebody was raised.
Sure. So, so what I'm hearing is examples of what works, but also what doesn't work, right? And, and that was a similar approach to how we approached the middle housing code changes. We had diagrams and some examples and tours and things like that. So that, great. So Commissioner Kendall, I'll challenge you. So next time you go to Bend, I want you to find that area that, that you don't like or you don't think works very well. And, and tell me where it's at, so I can start doing the research on it, right? Figure out how that, how that works. But, but then, so again, our community's not that big. So just on the west side of our community in between Culver Highway and, and Forest Street, probably 80% of the lots on that side of town are 5,000 square foot lots, okay? So in, and a lot of the lots in the Yarrow subdivision, which have some pretty significant slopes, those are, a lot of them that haven't been consolidated are 6,000 square foot lots, okay? So again, it's the details that matter, believe it or not. And, and you recall that when we, when we looked at the middle housing code changes, I wanted to make sure that the right amenities with each dwelling were, that were there, right? So if you're gonna increase density on a lot, and I remember dwelling units on a lot, then I also wanted the appropriate parking, the appropriate open space, because we don't have lots of parks. And so where you start to create problems are a lot of families, individuals living in a smaller area and they don't have a place to access recreation. Why then, you know, idle hands of devil's workshop is what, what I was told as a young child. And, and so the other part of it's parking and how you utilize your street and design your streets. And so a lot of that was also considered in the middle housing code amendments, right? So all, all very good suggestions. We, we can, we can definitely look at that.
And I'm also, I think, looking at it sooner rather than later since we are focusing so much on increasing homes for people to have affordable homes. I think this is, should be an issue that maybe we take a look at or dive into earlier rather than later because the, you, we're seeing the increase coming of houses. So you know, and like you said, how do, how many do you need? What is the density that you need to accomplish the funding that goes with that? My, my comments are mostly, let's just not get out of balance.
Right.
You know, cuz I have seen those out of balance places, but then I've also seen where they've balanced them well and, and things have been nice. So, you know, since we're starting sort of with a clean slate here, I think if we just maintain balance rather than slip into possible extremes, I think will represent and, and do the best for our city.
So another thing that the planning commission could do when we schedule a public hearing, you'd consider formal action on this, is that you could include in your recommendation that the city council reevaluate, evaluate the minimum lot, lot size within a defined period of time if they don't want to adopt an alter, you know, changes to this minimum lot sizes. And so in other words, your recommendation to council is this is a problem, let's, let's figure it out sooner than later. And that's, that's also really important because then it shows the council, you've looked at it. You understand that they're, they are ultimately the decision-making body and that your focus on planning and the, and the, as it relates to housing, this is an issue that you would like to see addressed sooner than later.
So Nick, this is Mike, just one quick comment. So I appreciate Mary's comment about balancing, but I also appreciate your comments about the infrastructure, you know me, parks and sidewalks. So my initial gut reaction is I, I think there are parts of the city that would, would be well positioned already to take advantage of smaller lot size. But I think there are others that are just not there yet. So to, to make a blanket policy that we're going down to 5,000 square feet is a little worrisome. Unless we can parse that in such a way that really allows for the other growth, the master of the parks plan to catch up and, and you know, the more paving, I mean, we're still paving roads where people live on in, in, in the, in the city. So I, I think there's other areas that we would have to be really considerate of when we talk about the, the 5,000 lot size and just having more houses.
Good point. That's great feedback. All right, Beth, in the interest of time, should we move on to the next slide?
And yes, go to the next slide and the one beyond that. So as we're thinking about updating the action plan, we'll, we'll look at all of the actions in there. We honestly, we've already looked at them and seen what the city's evaluated, the city's accomplished and what still needs to be accomplished potentially. But these three actions were rising to the top as things that seemed particularly of interest to the community. So looking at opportunities to support transitional and supported housing for veterans, looking at opportunities for land assembly. And land assembly then can be used to support development of, of your, your income restricted housing, your low and middle income housing. That can be an important tool. You can often use urban renewal funds to do that kind of land assembly. And then looking at opportunities for development of homeownership improvement funds to support maintenance of existing owner occupied housing. One of the things to think about as we're updating the action plan is that the state currently has more funds than usual devoted to housing. And one of the places that it'll have more funding over the next couple of years is around the healthy housing initiative from the Oregon House, Oregon Health Authority. The rules are still being written for that program. But that program is essentially there to, to support rehabilitation of existing housing through providing grants to cities. And that can be used to fund this kind of action.
The, the importance of those funds is to maintain one's home, so it does not become dilapidated. Right? And in those cases where, where we do have them in our community, they're spending more money on energy to heat, cool, you know, even water than should be. So they're spending more money on utilities than they should. The other issue is, it's my perspective that one of the ways that we deal with homelessness at a very broad level is keep people in their homes and in their job to reduce the number of people that potentially could come into homelessness. Part of the way you would do that is to maintain, ensure that people's homes are safe, that they are generally energy efficient and functional, things like that. So you don't have dilapidated housing. We all know of called a manufactured dwelling park where the quality of it is really diminished. And the safety of those residents aren't there. And over time, the number of homes has diminished. So therefore you have fewer homes that people can live in. Well, if they're maintained, then you get to retain those homes. And you're, you're, you're maintaining that supply of land. So that's another way someone will go, why would we just get money for maintenance of a home? It, it, in the bigger picture, it's keeping people in their homes and, and so ensuring that they're safe and they're not spending exorbitant amount of money on, you know, power because there's, you know, no insulation or some other problem that, that's requiring that.
So that is the, the end of the presentation. I feel like I've taken a lot of your time.
Well, I don't wanna judge, but I thought it was a good discussion, good overview. I mean, there's some, I think you'll see there's some good, good statistics you can take away. Forty, forty percent of our community really needs housing at a, at a very, very, much lower price point. And so that's, that's something to keep an eye on. So moving forward, again, so this is a work session. Hopefully allowing you to become more comfortable with the housing capacity analysis, what it entails, the, the related policies coming out of that are, why it matters. So that when you see it again, you can, you can further absorb that. Maybe you'll have additional questions, which is totally fine during the, during a public hearing, of course. So I think we're planning public hearings in June, is that, is that right, Beth? Yeah. So we'll, we'll, that's, that's when you'll see this next. Bigger picture, questions, concerns, I, bigger picture. I mean, there could be really also minute, specific questions about this.
You had mentioned that there was a larger amount of information other than the summary here. And that contains, in a nutshell, what?
I don't know if it's a nutshell.
Oh.
It's probably, it's probably, what are we, about 80-page report, Beth, with lots of? Yeah.
It's 107.
Is that something, is that something that, that we need to review and take a look at? Or is that mostly what?
Absolutely, you would wanna do that. So what I'll do is I'll work with, I, I, I assume this level of detail would be a good starting place for us. I'll get you the 107 pages. It'll cure your insomnia, guaranteed, except for the executive summary. And, and, and you guys can sink your teeth into that. Beth, i- is that something we could put up on our website as a draft and then email that link out to the commission?
Yes, I believe we are having it proofread right now.
Yeah.
So once it's done being proofread, then, then it will be ready and, yes. And the information that we gave you here has bits from each of the, the different parts of this. So what you saw tonight, that 107 pages is an expansion of all of this.
Right, right. So we will, we will get it to you as soon as it's proofread. And yeah. I'll, I'll expect a five-page book report from you, the next planning commission meeting. I'm kidding. I think that, I think that about covers it. We did put additional discussion on the agenda just in case there was some other, something we needed to talk about.
Next meeting schedule?
Third, right? Yeah, so May 3rd?
May 3rd.
Yes. Well, wait a second, did we note, did we notice that for 6?
No, we, yeah, we noticed it for 6.
Yeah, so we'll change it to 6:30 as soon as the notices, as we haven't noticed the meeting accordingly. So probably, probably June is when you're gonna start going to 6:30, okay? Good, good question. Yeah, and then what's on the agenda?
We have the master plan for fire and EMS.
That's, that's correct. So the fire EMS district, they, they've filed for a master plan approval for their, what they call the main or what I call the J Street station here. So should be pretty light in nature, so. And then, so June would be housing capacity analysis and related comp plan amendments. We'll try to work with our city attorney. We, we, we do have a developer that would like to build some townhomes and use private streets. And so I need, I need to work with him on, on some potential code changes with that. Again, in this size of community, you only get so many options to capture so many, so many of these development opportunities. And so it may require planning commission action, but I think instead we could, there's also a possibility of just taking it to the city council. Because it would just be a amendment to the city's standards and specifications. So if there's strong feelings about that, let me know. I, I, the city attorney reported to me that that is a possibility to just fast-track it to the council. I do, I do believe that the planning commission does have a role in that to make sure that it's generally consistent with your plans and policies and regulations that you are responsible for. Having a role administer not only in establishing those, but also making land use, related land use decisions.
I think for me that, that sounds interesting and I'm not sure that my brain can comprehend what that would mean in the long term if we just say to agree to that right now. So I would maybe think if you wanna add that as an agenda item, if, if that's a concern. And we can decide if that's something that we'd like to talk about more. Does that sound fair?
Commissioner Kendall, I'd sort of just, even though you have it all ready to fast-track, maybe just review it so that we have an idea of what it is. And then if we find that we have a lot of questions, we can slow the fast-track down. If not, we can say, oh yeah, that sounds like something that could just be easy and, and move it on.
No problem, that sounds easy.
Well, cuz whenever I hear private streets, I think of all the pushback we get about the pines. So.
Yeah, we don't wanna do the pines.
I'm, I'm only smiling because I, I know this, right?
Well, I, I just, that's, whenever we hear private streets, everybody brings up the pines and how did that happen and, so. Yeah.
Abso- absolutely, that's a very fair point. So those are two tangible examples or tangible developments in our community where we have some serious concerns, right? That didn't, that didn't work so well. So I appreciate the interest, appreciate the awareness of that. And so part of staff's responsibility is to show you that it can work, right? I think we, we can do that fairly easily. We actually have one example of it, believe it or not. And so if, if you guys are looking for field trips in the community, go on J Street and then head south on 10th Street where the, the new paving is, 10th Street was extended. And that's the new manufactured dwelling park, okay? Yes, yeah. Correct, yeah. And so the streets in there are private, okay? And I believe, so the manufactured dwelling park standards have three street options. So they always have it's either 20 or 24-foot travelway, two-way travelway. The question is, do you want on-street parking on both or just one? And if not, then you, you have to stripe and sign for no parking on whatever side you don't. Or in the case where there's none, both sides. And then the other aspect is sidewalks. Right? So we got pushed back on that, but I made them put in the sidewalks, cuz. Yeah, no, no one needs to walk in the middle of the street. Yeah. So, so that's a good example that will, that will be built, but you can go in there now and just, well, you can look from the sidewalk and see how that, how that will, will play out. Yeah. With that, I think that covers it for staff.
Anything else? Do we need a motion to adjourn or can we just adjourn?
I know, that new fun thing you get, the gavel, thoughts for you?
Yeah. I just get to say we adjourn at 8:05.
Correct. Well done.